City of Norco, City Council regular meeting Wednesday, March 7th. Call to order at 6:00 PM. And City Clerk, can you take your role, please?
Councilmembers Greg Newton, Berwin Hanna, Kevin Bash, Mayor Pretend Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor Ted Hoffman, all present.
Are there any speaker cards for closed session?
No speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, we're recessed to closed session and... Good evening. All right. Recommending from closed session and into public session. Report, have any actions taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, we discussed anticipated litigation in one case, and there's no reportable action.
All right. Please stand. Please stand and have Sister Laura Lynn Hakey from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints for our invocation.
Opportunity we have to meet as a community, and please bless our leaders that they might be able to serve this community and listen to the residents and take into consideration all things that need to be heard to make good decisions and to keep Norco Norco. And we bless them with the ability to make the correct decisions that they need to and that we might be able to have good discussions on those things that the city might need and benefit in. And please bless them, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. City Council business. City Council Communication reports on regional boards and commission. Berwin, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They're working right along on the 15 freeway expansion, and they're working on some ideas to try to move traffic along a little better on the 91 freeway, which I think is a big challenge. But the other day at one of our subcommittee meetings, we got into a long discussion about new transponders for the express lanes on all the freeways. And if they get them, they'll work on every freeway in the state. But there's one transponder that has a button where you can turn it over to where it go from regular or go to the three car or three person in a car. They've got one that's going to might be a sticker on your windshield, and there's several options. We've carried that over to some more meeting or the next meeting, so report on that later. Then RTA, about all I got to report on that. We're getting ready to take delivery on, I believe it's 64 new dollar ride buses, and that's all I got to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Oh, there Greg, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Chino de Salter Authority Board meeting, and the items we discussed are in reference to the CDA items we have on our agenda tonight. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Kevin?
Actually, I need to take a little bit of time. Something, I went to WRCOG. RCA was actually canceled, but I went to WRCOG, and some very important things were discussed. We heard from a man named Johannes Mayonius, who is Director of the Institute of Spatial Economic Analysis, University of Redlands School of Business. And I don't know if a lot of you are familiar with the work of John Huizing, but his theory, which a lot of us disagreed with, was that logistics centers were the wave of the future, and they were going to provide jobs. And as you know, many of our sister cities have spent a lot of time and money trying to attract logistic centers. Well, this man gave a report to WRCOG that's truly frightening. It was the impact of automation on employment, and some of the things he talked about, and I'm going to give this to Andy, and maybe he can send it out. Some of the things happening, Amazon is experimenting with an unattended convenience store where cameras and sensors track your purchases. Autonomous trucks and delivery vehicles are being tested throughout the United States. Restaurants are experimenting with food preparation robots to replace workers. The issue is, is that what he is predicting, that if we get on this three to four years from now, it will be too late. But he says basically what's happening is robotics are destroying jobs, and it's going to create a schism between low income pay and high income pay. There'll become an income inequality, and he believes it's going to generate massive What he recommended that cities do is, one, education, two, sports-related things. These are things that people will keep putting money out to, and about five or six other things. He said, "We better get ready. We better try to attract headquarter functions." So like we have 100 acres coming up, we should try to attract the headquarters, much like we have Easy Up or some of these other places, because the management level will survive this. It's the low-wage worker that will not. We also have to get ready for public safety. He said that you're going to have massive homelessness. And he said that one of the things that he would advise against is even teaching logistics. He said unless it's for management, he said, "There's no jobs." He said they're going to just simply keep putting, they're just going to use robots. They don't argue, they don't, they don't give you problems. So it was really a frightening report, and I'm going to maybe ask Andy if he can get some more from that gentleman. It was really interesting. And then the second part of that, and what kind of makes me mad is this John Huizing for five, six years has been saying, "Oh yeah, logistics, logistics, logistics." Well, the man was frankly full of crap, and privately, he actually agrees with this guy, which really makes me mad. Then there's some legislation coming up, and again, I'll give this to Andy because it is concerning. Some of it is not in the, not along the way too much. But AB 1912 Rodriguez, it's, it's something I want you to look into. My understanding, Andy, are you familiar with this? It's the joint severability in which we would, for past employees, be liable for... I'm kind of catching on the spot here, but what I'd like you to do is I'd like you, maybe I'm going to give this to you, and maybe you can kind of let us know how deep this would go. But basically, what it does is it forces you to take care of unfunded liabilities from, from people that normally you're not paying those things. AB 2268 is aimed at restoring annual funding for cities, which annex land and reliance. I'm going to just go ahead and not worry about that. SB 827 would exempt certain housing projects from locally developed and adopted building height limitations, density, parking requirements, design review standards. Allows developer to determine density and height, 45 to 85 feet, depending on the radius, from transit corridor or major transit stop. State density bonus law applies. There's all kinds of things that this would change. SB 831, accessory dwelling units allows ADUs on any lot that allows for the construction of a home. I think we're already dealing with some of that, but they're really trying to double down on it. AB 3000, new housing developments. Parking requirements prohibits a city, county, or a city, county from imposing minimum parking requirements for new housing developments where off-street parking is permitted. So in other words, if you build a development, if there's off-street parking, you can't enforce to make them have parking. And then finally, SB 946, something I know we've all been dealing with, is sidewalk vendors. Prohibits a local authority from adopting rules or regulations that regulate or prohibit sidewalk vendors unless it first adopts a sidewalk vending license program. Are we in the, we're in the process of doing that, correct? Putting together a vending program? Are we? I thought we were looking at that. Anyway, it's something we're going to have to do, because otherwise, we're going to have every flower seller from here to Hatchapi selling flowers here in Norco. And you can't restrict the location. There's a whole bunch of things coming down the pike. And then there's a lot of things coming down to protect homelessness, because there's an anticipation that homelessness is really going to start. It's already impacting, but they say it's going to really expand. What this gentleman from Redlands was basically saying is those low-income jobs are going to go away. So anyway, I just want to pass this down to Andy if he can look at that. Whoa. I know, I'm sick, guys. That's why I'm sitting over here in the no-man's corner. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to really touch on a couple of things, and then I'm going to let Brian and hopefully give us the Reader's Digest for this weekend over at the Healing Gardens. Hang on, Brian, let me hold. For those of you that haven't been up to Ingles Park, you will see that the Veterans Executive Committee along took the spearheaded donation by the Dees family, along with Sparky, Panzer, and a few other businesses. And you'll see lit, illuminated, that's a better word, up on the hill, the USA sign. And we're working that out. Hope you enjoy it. It shows our patriotic ability right above there. So when you see that red, white, and blue up there, and USA, think of that. All right. This weekend, and the good thing is Ingles Park, and I really want to emphasize this, it's a big family weekend up there. We had the junior rodeo and the high school rodeo, and the best thing about that, and the best thing about Ingles Park is all the families are up there for the two days. Attended the Uricua meeting, that's the waste management. And I know that Chad is going to be working with JCSD regarding the wastewater, and hopefully we'll do something in the near future and come up with what we're going to do with our 1.6 million gallons of water when we get it finally from the, released in probably in December. So we'll see what happens. Right, Chad?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. And then just a reminder, March 24th, the, Robin forgot about it, but the Norco High School 50th Gala, it'll be held at the 4H Barns up at Ingles Park. And you don't have to be a Norco High grad, and Kathy, you can tell all your friends, we can be up there, and we can show them what Norco's about. All right? So, Brian, can you give us the Reader's Digest version for this Saturday's Healing Garden?
Yes, sir. As you know, council approved the Healing Garden, Benita Healing Garden at Pike's Peak Park. The actual ceremony will start at 10:30, and the program will run all through the day with the planting of the trees up until around 2 o'clock. However, they are asking anybody who would like to volunteer, if they want to show up around 8 o'clock, they are taking volunteers to help them do some of the pre-setup for the planting that'll take place. So they're trying to do some of the pre-planting, and then the actual setting of the trees, of the interior part of the garden, will be done right after the opening ceremonies, which starts at 10:30.
Okay, thank you. So 10:30, that's up at Pike's Peak Park, right outside of Ingles. Okay, thank you. All right, moving right on along, City Council Consent Items on the calendar. Ask for any items to be pulled. You have a motion to approve?
I've got one to pull here, sir. Item G.
Item G by Berwin. A motion to approve, and I have a second?
Second.
This is where those robots don't work.
Okay, that's not working either, but the motion does pass unanimously.
Thank you. All right, Berwin, you pulled G?
Yeah, actually, this is just a question for Chad on item G, the acceptance of the storm drain project on Temoskel. That's just for the storm drain project. All that is, we're still going to repave the street when the engineering report comes back, right?
Correct. The storm drain is finished, and that portion is done. We actually have the street paving portion out to bid right now, and should come back, at least from all bids, at the end of this month, and we'll bring it forward, hopefully sometime in, probably by the second meeting in April.
Okay, thank you, sir. I move to approve that one.
Can I ask a question on that as a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Is that a full width on that street?
Yes, complete street between River Drive and 7th Street.
Thank you.
All right, you got it first. Do you have a second?
I don't have a second. I have a... Motion and a second. That motion passes unanimously.
Wow, we got a backup. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. It's the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and hand it to the City Clerk so that she may be recognized. Does any, Cheryl?
Yes, may I have their cards? First one is Bonnie Slager.
Good evening, Bonnie.
Good evening. I'm just here to remind you all that this Saturday, after you go to the senior breakfast and to the Healing Garden ceremony, then in the evening, come to the casino night that Norco Horsemen's is putting on. The purpose of this event is to raise money so that we can give scholarships to high school seniors to help them with their college education, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good evening, Justin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. Justin DeWelle from Assemblymember Cervantes's office. Brief legislative update. Two of Assemblymember Cervantes's bills passed out of the Public Safety Committee in the Assembly this week. The first is AB 1882. Now, this bill will make it a felony to contact or communicate with a minor over the Internet with the intent to commit human trafficking of that minor. So under current law, this is a crime for certain offenses. However, it is not a crime to do so with the intent to commit human trafficking explicitly. So as it is, some human traffickers evade the law, so this bill would close that loophole. The second is AB 1746. This bill expedites the process of prosecuting serial perpetrators of sexual battery and statutory rape. So under current law, criminal prosecution for certain crimes can be consolidated into a single trial when they're committed by one perpetrator across multiple jurisdictions, for example Riverside County and San Bernardino County. However, this process of consolidating the trial doesn't apply to those two crimes, statutory rape and sexual battery. So this process, it cuts down on court costs, and it's also, is better for the victim or the survivor, as they only have to testify in front of their perpetrator one time instead of multiple. So that bill passed unanimously out of Public Safety Committee. In the community, we are hosting a free community health screening with the Corona Norco Unified School District. That's going to be this Saturday at Corona High School from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can come out and get a free health screening and immunization, screening for diabetes, refurbished eyeglasses, and a variety of other health services. So do come out and spread the word. And that is my update for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a holder to three minutes. Three minutes, okay?
Do you, do you think I have a reputation of speaking too long?
Yeah.
No. Well, thank you for the opportunity. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kathy Azavito, and I'm the Equestrian Coordinator out at Silver Lakes. And so being Silver Lakes was on the agenda tonight, I thought I'd just thank you for the opportunity to give you a little update on what's going on at the ranch. And the ranch is just thriving. We're having next weekend, I'd love for you guys all to come. We're, our horse shows have become so successful that we have to run two rings at a time. We've got ranch riding, ranch rail, and ranch trail going on on Saturday, and then on Sunday, we have cowboy dressage, western dressage, and classical dressage. We've been seeing around 60 horses with over 100 entries each day at our shows, and the really most rewarding part of all is there's been so many Norconians who haven't been showing in the past are now coming out to the ranch at Silver Lakes and showing their horses and getting a different experience. And I just want to close in saying that we're really, really looking forward to having our new facility once we get through the whole process with the MOU. And RJ just told me recently that we started with hoping for a string of 20 horses to have a stable where people can come to Norco and experience Horstown USA and ride horses. Now he's decided he wants a string of 70. So it's going to be a huge fabulous ranch with giving lots of locals an opportunity to ride that don't own horses. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nordine Esmelee. I'm the General Manager for the Orco Gas Station on 6th Street and Hamner. I'm here to let you guys know that since the opening of the Silver Lake Park, we have been seeing a tremendous increase in our sales. I would say about double digits in fuel and gross merchandise. So this is a good opportunity for us and for the City of Norco to increase some income and taxes for you guys, too. So, just about it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Villapando, and I'm the Director of Sales for the Fair Filled In and Suites, right down the street. A little history about myself is I started working at the Hampton Inn in 2011, and I was there till 2015. So as far as the hospitality industry here in Norco, you couldn't be talking to a better person. Now, prior to my employment with the Hampton Inn, there was a point where they were actually going to claim bankruptcy, because the travel and the, you know, the travel just wasn't there. You know, here I was competing with Ontario and Corona. No one wanted to stay in Norco. Why? There weren't enough places to eat. Why? You know, there weren't things in walking distance, nothing to do. Who wants to stay in Norco? Right? So 2016 in June, I started working at the Fair Filled In. And this went on for the whole time, from 2011 to 2015. My owner sold the hotel, a new management company came, and I was laid off for about six months. I was hired at the Fair Filled In and Suites. Now, during that time, Silver Lakes had just opened up that year. Okay? So from day and night, I mean, the difference in travel pattern was just mind-blowing. I came into that hotel, and I was like, "Yeah, we're going to be number one." And they're like, "Melissa, have you seen our STAR report?" Now, STAR report is something that all the hotels, they pay, it's, it's, you know, basically you don't know. Each hotel does this reporting to see if you're getting your fair share. We definitely got our fair share. Here in Norco, the hotels are thriving on the weekends. I can have no groups coming in on a Saturday, and we will sell out. We were presented an award last year for our production and how much, you know, appreciation from the city, because we've done so well. But, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, if it weren't for Silver Lakes, we wouldn't be doing that well. The company that I work for, they're a very successful company, and they're very, before they open up a hotel, they do their research. You know, they have 15 hotels and growing. In the past, you know, hoteliers have looked at Norco, and they wouldn't give it a second look. They're like, "Oh yeah, but what's there to do? Where do they eat? Where do they go? What attracts people to Norco?" There was nothing until Silver Lakes. Listening to the people who travel into the hotel, they talk about what a great facility it is, how nice it is, you know, it's one of the nicest places they've ever been, you know, having their concerts there, being a local residence in Corona. My friends are like, "Did you go see that concert?" You know, Silver Lakes has definitely had a very positive impact. Children from...
I'm wrapping up.
Oh, okay. Well, this is what I'd like to say. If you want Norco to be successful, then you have to give them what they need. The hotels are successful, a lot of that has to do with that facility, that complex down the street. They bet on us, now we need to bet on them. In the prayer earlier, the ladies prayed that you guys will do what's best to keep Norco what it is, and this is a beauty. I was, in the past, I've been to meetings, they're like, "Shop Norco, buy Norco, and say goodbye." Well, these people that come to Silver Lakes, they shop Norco, they stay in Norco, and on Sunday, they say goodbye. It doesn't get better than that. So on top of their facility, which is one of the biggest facilities, I just want to say, you know, it's, Silver Lakes is a great thing, and, you know, they've done great things so far for the city. They're only going to grow for the businesses around us, so I support Silver Lakes.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Ashley Toten.
Hi there, everybody.
Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening. How are we? So I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Ashley Toten, and I am the Events Manager over at Silver Lakes for special events and sales. And we actually just opened up our brand-new event facility, and I just want everybody in this room to know that. I actually know some of you, because you've actually booked an event at our private facility. So there's a private banquet space upstairs, and now we've currently opened up our restaurant down below, open every day at 4:00. And just a really neat statistic is the upstairs location has only been open for 90 days, and we've booked well over two dozen events already. Horse, Horse Week's been there several times. We have Norco High School banquets that are taking place there, weddings, quinceañeras, private parties, holiday parties, birthdays, and it's just so exciting, because everybody gets to find a location to spend a special event, and that lasts memories throughout their whole life. So it's really important to us, and it's important to me, and so please help spread the word that we're there and we're open, and if you need anything, I'm at Silver Lakes. So thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Hey, my name is Tyler Hughes. I'm the Parking Supervisor over at Silver Lakes. I started at Silver Lakes over two years ago, they first opened up. I worked my way from, you know, parking attendant to now running the Parking Department. Silver Lakes means a lot to me, as well as all the other employees that work there. We have approximately 170 employees that work there right now. You know, Silver Lakes means a lot to all of them as well. So, you know, as the park continues to grow, you know, I don't think it's any secret that the number of employees is also going to be growing exponentially. Silver Lakes gives jobs to a lot of people who live, you know, right here in Norco. See, I think Silver Lakes is a great business to have in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Moss.
Evening, Leslie.
I'd like to take this time to talk a little bit about Silver Lakes and how appreciative I am of them. And a little background on myself, I'm a 23-year resident of Norco. I went to Norco Intermediate. I went to Norco High, where I met my husband. My children attend Highland and Norco Intermediate. I was a stay-at-home mom, and I wanted to look for a job, and I thought, "Hmm, well, Silver Lakes is hiring." So I went to Norco College, and I applied, and they hired me, and I've worked there since day one, and I was actually a parking attendant. Through the time, I've shown my commitment, and I'll be, now I am Cash Manager, and I'll be eternally grateful to Vicki and RJ for believing in me and just giving me a passion. I love my job, and I love Silver Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Ron Mugar.
Good evening, Mr. Mugar.
How you doing? I, I'm here, the first thing I want to do is, is I want to request that you put my case on the agenda for next, the next meeting. I think it's pretty important that you get both sides of the story. I don't think that's happened yet. You've heard one side, and you're making decisions on, you're being asked to make decisions on just one side of the story. And putting that on the agenda would give me a chance to voice my side of the story. And it's pretty important. There, the city attorney, Mr. Eric, Eric, ah, I forget his last name here. Anyway, he's, he's put forth a settlement offer to me. I don't know if you have seen that yet. I made a copy of it for you and passed it out to each of you, so you'll get a chance to look that over. It's, they're claiming several things. Number one, that I have two structures on my property that are illegal. And they've been on the tax roll since, since the '60s, and I don't know how they could be illegal. One of them, there was a permit taken out, but we don't know if it was ever finalized. The claims are that it wasn't, but that's, that's, I'm prepared to argue that. I believe it was finalized. And it got to the tax assessor, and he put it on the tax roll, and it's been being paid taxes on for, ever since the late '60s. So that, that particular one did have a permit. The other one has, has been there for, since the house was built in '64. And never any problem with it until all of a sudden now. It seems like they want, they're wanting to bring things up that, that really don't need to be brought up. If, if the city went around to every house in the city and, and looked around and, and found a structure, and started telling them to demolish their structures, I think there'd be a problem. I think people would be a little bit upset about that. And that's what's happening to me. Plus, they want me to pay $35,000 in attorney's fees for the city. And that's a little bit overboard.
We're going to have to have you wrap it up, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. As I said, Mr. Mugar, in the last time, you are represented by counsel, and because of...
Not now.
I understand. So any other thing, you'll have to go through the attorney present, we, as far as that goes.
Okay, well, I don't have counsel.
Anything, but anything else, you have to contact our, our attorney, okay?
Okay.
The city prosecutor, which is Mr. Draper. Okay? Draper.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Harvey Sullivan.
How you doing, Mayor? First of all, thank you for the tireless job you do, and hello to everybody, council people, staff as well. Hope you're all doing well and attend the casino night, Saturday night, so that you might win some big money. Anyway, I'm up here in support of Ron Mugar, Ron Muger. Right now, just what he just said there, he's not, he's not represented by an attorney right now. And so I think you, every one of you was elected by the people to do the best job you could for the citizens of this community. And this man has a real problem communicating with staff and some of the things that's going on. He had an inspection on August 15th, 2017, that everything was found cleared up at that particular time. It's been six months of attorney's fees trying to get the city to look at a permit that was in the city record, that we pulled from the city records, and showed the city staff, several of them, that the laundry room was permitted. They claimed it was never signed off, so went to the tax assessor's office. The tax assessor has been assessing it since the '60s. Also, he has a wooden stable there, 11 by 26 wooden stable. It has a dirt floor, has the same shake roof on it as the house does, it was built when the house was built. They claimed that was illegal. It's been on the tax rolls since the '60s also. Mr. Muger needs to be heard in public by his peers, the people that govern this city, and not by some lawyer over in Los Angeles that's trying to put him on the homeless, out on the street as a homeless person, like Kevin was saying, there's going to be many more homeless. If Mr. Muger hadn't hired an attorney to stop the heavy-handed things that this attorney was trying to pull, he would be homeless right now because they would have taken his house, spent all of equity he has in his house to get it cleaned up with the way they thought it should be. Mr. Muger didn't exactly live like some of us do. That was his junk and his personal property. He did get it cleaned up, and he was, passed his inspection on August 15th. So it's time that you listen to his case and let him have his say here in public in front of God and everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey.
Ed Dixon.
How's the pelvis doing?
Good. Good. Thank you, Mayor. City Council. I'm just up here to say, I wanted to talk a little bit about Silver Lakes and the positive things they are for the community. I don't think anybody can deny that Silver Lakes hasn't been a good thing for this city. I think we've heard enough from the people out here and the crowd to verify that. And one thing I noticed about Silver Lakes on a firsthand basis, you know, there's a brotherhood up there, kind of like the fire department, kind of like the police department, the sheriff's department. The people up there are the nicest bunch of people I've ever been around. I just wanted to put that plug in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Karen Leonard.
Good evening. Well, I'm really happy to hear that Silver Lakes is doing so well, and they're impacting so many different businesses, because that's what we want, right? Successful businesses, promoting successful businesses. So that's being said, we've heard that gas stations are doubling, they got double digits here, hotels are sold out. So I don't know why, I hope we're not going to be seeing any kind of tax increase or initiative for a tax increase this coming election. We shouldn't need one at this point if we're doing so well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Karen.
David Buzaha.
Good evening. I'm David Buzaha. I'm the chairman-elect for the Norco Area Chamber of Commerce. We believe it's our job to support not only our members, but the Norco business community as a whole, both of which Silver Lakes belongs to. But I also want to speak to the other businesses we represent, the Fair Filled In that I drive by every weekend and see the parking lot full. As a resident, I've been known to complain that sometimes I have a hard time getting a table at my favorite breakfast restaurant. But as an advocate of businesses, I think that's a pretty good thing, and I think we owe a debt of gratitude to Silver Lakes for all the great young families that they bring into our community, to our hotels, to our restaurants, and our stores every weekend.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right. Let me get back to my notes. All right, concludes some public comments, and moving on to item 5A, discussion and action items. And this would be Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item being brought before the council is approval, recommendation for approval and assignment and assumption agreement between the Chino Basin Desalter Authority and the city of Norco. What this agreement is about is related to some existing de-watering wells and peseometers that are on the property currently located in the, what we call the eight-acre portion of the property, in the, in the most southern portion of the Silver Lakes property. These wells were part of the Chino Basin Desalter project, where they were attempting to drill underneath the San Ana River. At the time, they were using these wells to basically de-water their pit, which they were operating in, to push the, the drilling rig through underneath the river, and, because it kept flooding into their pit. So they built many de-watering wells to pump water out and to keep up and not impact their project. Ultimately, their efforts failed when they hit an abutment, and they could no longer, they couldn't remove the drilling rig out of the hole and couldn't recover it. So they went through a separate plan of attack to try to get that pipeline drilled. Ultimately, that plan no longer involves need for the de-watering wells or the peseometer wells on the property. Currently, there's 10 de-watering wells and four peseometers. The, so, since it's not going to be necessary to use those anymore, normally, the city, we would require CDA to demolish those wells because they're not needed for their project any longer. However, those wells do present an opportunity for Silver Lakes in potentially using them as production wells to get water from the property to serve for the irrigation needs. They currently have two functioning wells on the property, but having these wells was deemed to be a good opportunity that would help Silver Lakes tremendously of not having to bring additional drill rigs in, drill wells in different places. These were potentially viable wells that they could use, which they did actually take a little bit of time and test them, verify they could pump, and could, that water would be usable for their, and can be distributed to their existing lake where they store water. So based off their tests, they, they had asked that the city consider keeping those wells on the property for their use. So we engaged CDA in that discussion, and basically, CDA had no issues with that request. But they did want to make sure, because technically, having those wells, they, they drilled those wells, and they want to make sure they release any liability they may have with keeping them in place rather than destroying them. They've asked for this agreement between the city, because we're the owners of the property, and CDA as the entity who's, who's basically giving up these, these wells rather than destroying them. So CDA developed an agreement that, which the city and our council reviewed, and we feel is appropriate. We did put in there a condition that we would like to see the 10 de-watering wells left in place, and then they would, CDA would destroy the four remaining peseometers. Mainly, they're located in the south portion beyond the, the riprap wall, so they really don't have any benefit to Silver Lakes or the city in general. And they're really just monitoring well, levels, well, so they're, they're pretty easy to destroy. So there is a condition in the agreement that they acknowledge they must destroy these wells by March of next year, which coincides with when they plan to do drilling through the Silver Lakes portion of that property. So as they do their drilling, they'll also destroy these wells at the same time so they can use the contract to do the same work. This agreement doesn't involve any financial obligations or any, any obligations to the city. It's simply, we're accepting these wells as is, and we will, and release liability for CDA. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, have any questions of Chad Burwin? I'll start with you.
No.
Robin?
No, you answered it.
And Kevin?
No.
Greg?
Chad, in your report, you reference that in 2000, it says 2012, CDA attempted that boring. It's just a small thing. I have it as 2014.
And I, my date could be wrong. I was going for past record, so I apologize. They kind of were operating in a three-year period where they were, where they got our original right-of-entry agreement to maybe where they actually physically did the work. So I may be reflecting when they got the first agreement to do the work, so I apologize.
Okay. No, I just wanted, because on my notes, I had that, when they were doing the microtunneling, that's when you had the 10 de-watering wells in place. And then, I'll always pronounce it peseometer, okay? But the four peseometer wells were installed when the microtunneler got stuck. And that's why they had to regulate the, the pressure on that. So, but, but I have it as 2014, so it's just a clarification. That's all I had.
Peseometer, paseometer. That's one I didn't understand. It's, so, my question, is that just a monitoring well? Is that what all that is now?
Yes.
So it doesn't have any, it's not like a normal? I know what the de-watering wells did. That's all it is? It just regulates?
For the most part. It's used to, it's used to determine pressure, but also is water levels too.
Okay, but it's outside the riprap?
Yes.
Okay. And you said they did some testing. You know the volume?
I don't, because it wasn't measured. It was just basically, it's, it was temporary equipment that was placed to verify it could pump, how much could be pumped potentially, but I don't have those numbers. Part of the requirements, if, if they end up equipping any of those wells, is they will have to have meters on to determine how much they can pump. Because each, each well is a little bit different, but potentially, I've heard that at times they were pumping 1,000 GPM out of some of these wells individually. So they have a pretty high capacity potentially.
Okay. And the water that is there, that's non-judicated water, correct?
At this time, correct. It's not, it's not adjudicated in Chino Basin. It's a sub-basin of the Chino Basin, but it's not accounted for water at this time.
Okay. And then finally, is that, it's safe to say the same on that eight-plus or minus acres is the same groundwater that's being pulled out of the original 122-acre parcel, correct?
Yes, it's, it's all under the influence of the river.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing. What's up? Public hearing?
No.
No discussion? Yeah. Do you have any cards on it?
No cards on this item, Mayor.
No cards on this item. Has he no cards? Bring it back to Council. Burwin, anything else?
Yeah, I know they quit, quit trying to bore under there. Probably a question for Greg, since he was the one over there that was on that committee. Did, did they ever get the pipeline through there?
No. What has happened so far is that when the microtunneler got stuck, they had to design a, a new process to get underneath the riverbed. So it, it's, right now, what they've accomplished is a, is a boring that just pretty well angles, I think, Chad, it's about 40 feet below the river bottom, and then it, it will sweep up to make the connection at Detroit Street. So the boring was successful, and then this late, this coming late, next year. Next year, they should complete the installation of all that pipe.
Okay, so they did get the boring done. They got under that obstacle that was, that you guys were sitting at first.
Right. And nobody won the pool on what it is, okay? And, and if you want, want to, there's a quarter of a million dollar microtunneling device still under the riverbed. So, but the, the test boring was successful.
Okay. All right, that's what I was wondering if they had completed that. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Robin? Kevin, anything else? Greg, any other comments?
So if you ever saw the movie Deepwater Horizon, okay? And when they do those pressure tests on that, that's what the peseometer wells would have done when that guy was trying to crawl through that pipe, trying to pull that microtunneler loose, okay?
Thank you for that descriptive, all right. I have any other comments? Do you have a motion?
We can approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
All right, going on to 5B. All right, going on to 5B. This is amendment number one to Norco Silver Lakes Parking Lot Ground Lease Agreement with Balboa Management Group to Include Water Rights and Use of Existing Wells. Andy? No, that's, I'm sorry, Brian.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of council. Tonight before you, it's an amendment to the ground lease for the portion of eight, that eight acre portion of land that is next to Silver Lakes. In 2015, the city entered into a parking lot agreement with Balboa Management for approximately eight acres of land adjacent to Silver Lakes property to provide vehicle parking for use related to the Silver Lakes operation. The Chino Basin Disalter Authority desires to, desire to construct a new potable waterline project in the near future through the leased property, that particular eight acre property, which will be, and this is related to the previous discussion we just had that Chad brought up, related to the de-watering wells. Balboa wants to use the de-watering wells to help meet the non-potable water irrigation needs for Silver Lake property. Pursuant to the rights granted to it under the city, by the city, under the existing ground lease and under the development agreement for Silver Lakes property, Balboa Management Group is requesting that the Silver Lakes Parking Lot Ground Lease, that particular eight acres, be amended to include non-potable water rights consistent with the provisions that are part of the development and ground lease agreements for the 122 acre parcels, which provides Balboa the right to non-potable water. Balboa Management Group has expressed its desire to include the parking lot grease water rights provision, which will allow it to use the 10 existing de-watering wells that Chad just previously discussed in report number 5A. On the site, and these, as these wells are abandoned, then Silver Lakes would take those wells and they would then make them operational, all 10 wells. And in exchange for that, they would be allowed, CDA, to construct the non-potable water pipeline through the leased property, which it still needs to do. Staff is providing Balboa the use of these de-watering wells as consistent with the intent of the Silver Lakes property ground lease and development agreement, which provides for unrestricted use of non-potable water for irrigation of the Silver Lakes property. The city recognizes the availability of non-potable is critical to the sustainability of the operations of Silver Lakes Equestrian Sports Park and the turf that exists there today. As part of this amendment, Balboa Management Group will be provided 24 months from the approval of this amendment and to permanently equip any of the 10 de-watering wells for non-potable water use. Any de-watering wells not permanently equipped must be properly destroyed per county riverside requirements by the end of the 25th month from the date of this amended agreement. Additionally, any onsite well use to pump groundwater must be metered as well, as well as the well location and reported to the city on an annual basis. Chad mentioned this earlier in the previous report. The amendment also requires that Balboa will be responsible for payment of any and all assessments pertaining to the use of pumping water from the property. And that's in case that there is, this particular area is adjudicated in the future, Balboa will borne all those costs. Staff has recommended the city council approve the attached amendment number one to the Norco Parking Lot Ground Lease Agreement, and we are available for any discussion.
Let me start down with you, Kevin, you all right? Greg?
Brian, I didn't see it in the report, but if I understood that you made a comment, I think it references a following item on the wells, and I'm trying to find it. It's in regard, if I misunderstood, let me know, in regard to the easement on CDA, which is an upcoming?
Item 5C, sir.
Okay, thanks. You made the comment that in exchange for the easement, basically, CDA has to give up the wells to get the easement? Is that what you mean by that? Or do you want me to wait till item 5C to ask you about that?
We're trying to answer it now. Basically, Balboa has agreed to provide the access lease across that leased property to give CDA the use of, making that connection. We're currently, right now, there's a chain of events here that has to happen. One, what Chad just brought before you, the amendment to the lease that we're bringing before you.
Well, we could wait.
And then C, which allows that CDA have that right to go across that particular eight acres that is already leased.
You mentioned if the wells aren't producing, they will be destroyed, destroyed or cap per county of riverside standards, by whom?
The city will require that upon inspection, if those are not, if those wells are not delivered and are not producing or put into production, then the existing or remaining wells have to be destroyed, and that would be the burden of Balboa in this case.
Okay.
This lease gives them the right to all tense, sir, so anything that isn't used, they would have to destroy.
Okay. It just wasn't clear to me on this. So one of my concerns is that Balboa will be responsible for payment of any and all assessments pertaining to the use of pumping water from the property. And before that, it talked about it being metered, correct? At well location, that the ground, the wells will be metered and reported to the city on an annual basis. What type of metering are we going to use? Is, I'll just give you all these questions, because I think this is fair and reasonable, at least to me, to make a decision. What type of meters? Is this going to be like a construction meter or a, you know, let's say a two inch or a four inch meter? Will there be a meter fee? Is there a development fee associated with that? And is it typical to charge our businesses on an annual basis for their water usage? And what is the rate of the cost of this water that you're proposing to charge Balboa?
Chad, I have such a question pertaining to the type of meter that is going to be used, dealing with that.
When Balboa begins to develop any and all these wells, they're going to have to work with the city to determine and work with how we're going to equip those wells. As far as the meter that's going to be required on equipping the well, we're going to recommend it be a mag meter, which is a highly reliable meter. Those meters aren't our meters. It's like we have a production wells, we have a meter, and usually they're all mag meters, but this is, this is not a product or treated that we are, as a city, are creating or generating that we are seeking revenue from. So it's really, just like the existing wells, you'll have to meter them. It's just existing equipment is part of the well, it's something we're going to charge for. They're just obligated to give us the information on a annual basis of how much they pump from every location.
So we're supplying the meters?
No, no, they have to purchase everything, but we're not providing any.
So it's cost to Balboa?
Yes.
To those meters?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'll let you take the one question I answered, asked Brian, was what businesses do we allow to just pay once a year?
Well, no business. No business, once a year, they pay, they pay monthly regarding their water usage. In relation to production, in what Silver Lakes would need to pay, the accounting that's done by the Chino Basin Water Master is traditionally done on an annual basis. So if the water that they pump, which is currently unadjudicated, becomes adjudicated as part of the Chino Basin, meaning they must pay for that water that's pumped, the Chino Basin Water Master will basically assess the city, because we're the owner of the property, the fees required for the water that was used. We would then bill Silver Lakes for that water used per this agreement, because Water Master for Chino only bills once a year based off of an annual accounting. They don't do a monthly or quarterly basis, they bill once a year. And so again, we're the property owners, they're renters, so the rights are really the City of Norco's rights. So any billing, because we're a member of the Chino Basin, has to go to us. We would then, in turn, give that bill to Balboa, who would then pay that assessment that's determined by the Water Master. But right now, and in the future going forward, there's not perceived to be any immediate expectation that that water they're currently pumping is going to be assessed, but we want to make sure in this agreement it covered that potential could occur, so that the city was not left with that potential payment for really a benefit that only went to Silver Lakes. So we want to make sure it was codified here that Silver Lakes will pay any future cost that may come up and determined by the Chino Basin Water Master.
Okay. But we are out, this, this area, this eight acres, is out of the Water Master boundaries?
It's in the Chino Basin sub-basin, which is currently not adjudicated.
Okay.
That's why we said if, at some point, because the state's looking to adjudicate and account for all water, this sub-basin may become something that the Water Master or the state determines must be accounted for, must be paid for. That's why we want to make sure in this agreement, we are covered as a city, that that obligation will not be ours.
Okay, so at this point, what you're saying is the water is proposed to be at no cost?
Correct.
Okay. And how far could the, and I guess it's just a guess, how far could they come back? Let's say if it's in a sub-basin, five years from now?
Traditionally, when, because something's not.
What's the timeframe?
It's usually they never go back in time, because it's not as if we were pumping from an adjudicated basin and they just found out, now they're trying to get us in the years. This is an unadjudicated area, so if and when they determine they want to adjudicate, it's a go-forward basis.
In addition, one of the reasons for metering so that we know how much water is coming out of the basin is to establish the right of use for the purposes of the adjudication.
Correct.
Okay. If it wasn't pumped at all, or if none of the wells were pumped and it was adjudicated, the City of Norco would have no entitlement to use any of the water, because we're not a part of you.
So today, the water will be free at no cost?
Correct, which is, which is the same as their, what they take out of the 120 acre portion of their property, so we've not changed the cost.
But, and on the 122, I have absolutely no heartburn with that, that agreement that was made. But the wells on the 122 are not metered, are they?
I'd have to verify if they were or not, but that's, again, it's one of the things that we want to correct if it's not there, because again, that, a lot of that infrastructure was put in before I got here, or right at the same time. So part of that is.
I only remember those wells from the 1980s.
Yeah, we would push to make sure that everything's being metered.
Sure. Okay. Then John, let me, since you wanted to jump in, when we move, in the future, when we move forward with the proposed future expansion, would not this, well, today it's a ground lease, but would not this lease have to be amended further? If there's a future project?
If, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, but if in fact, I'll make this as the hypothetical, because otherwise, that if there is proposed some other use than is a parking lot, then yes, the parking lot lease would have to be revised.
Okay.
Is that what the question was?
Yeah, pretty much, that the potential existence could be, have to be revised again in the future.
Could be, yeah.
Okay. And then who should I address the financial impact to as a question? Right now, we have a fixed lease agreement at a fixed price for a ground lease only. And we are proposing to change the terms of the lease to include all water rights.
That's correct.
And it would seem to me that as much as I support the Silver Lakes concept and what this business brings to the city, that when you go from a ground lease and you take the property to include the water rights, the value of that property increases. There's a value to those rights. And I'm curious why staff did not present an increase in the lease agreement at this point?
Well, let me answer, first of all, we feel it's consistent with the existing ground lease, which does not include a water rate. This particular land that we are leasing out, which, this particular eight acres, which we would give the same water rights to, is being charged, it's undeveloped land that we feel is, based on what we're charging, we are charging the same square footage rate for the same amount of land that we get from the 122 acres. So this particular lease here, and what we receive annually is that, is being charged at the same rate for developed land. We also felt that it is, it's consistent with the existing ground lease or, and development agreement that is on the Silver Lakes property. Therefore, we did not feel there should be an increase in the rate currently being charged right now for that particular eight acres.
Keeping the 122 out of it, the 122 acres out of that, like I said, no heartburn with what our development agreement is on the 122. I don't understand the nexus you're trying to, in a sense, make, because the eight acres was a ground lease parking only at, at a rate of $2,100 a month. Okay? And it says in the ground lease that there's not basically a relationship to the 122. I can read it for you if you'd like. So now, when you try to tie the eight acres to the 122 and include those water, water rights, to me, that property is worth more money. And that's my question.
Obviously, I was involved in much of the discussion in that regard, but I'm going to guess that the logic is that the quote water rights, the use of the water, it's not exactly water rights, but the use of the water is limited to being used on the 122 acre site, so that it probably doesn't have the same, I mean, you couldn't sell independently the eight acre site with water rights and use it for something else. You couldn't build a structure on it and, I don't know what you'd use that much water for. The water, the use of the water is for the 122 acre Silver Lakes property.
Well, John, you wrote this and it says no implied partnership, so that's why I asked the question.
There isn't an implied partnership.
Yeah, there is no implied partnership. And that's the relationship to the 122.
Yeah, except.
Okay. That's all I have, thanks.
Robin?
So Brian, the only thing that I had was the same, and I read it kind of the same way as Greg did, that in the staff report, it talks about that Balboa has a desire to include the water rights provisions for the de-watering wells in exchange for allowing CDA to construct the pipeline through their leased property. So I kind of feel like the way this is written, you give me this, I'll give you that, and the way I read it, if we don't, then what? So is that, am I misinterpreting how the staff report is, or can you clarify that for me?
And like I said, I think there's a chain or a domino effect here. One leads to the next one, to the next one, to, there's five reports here. They all have to kind of go in sequential order in order for us to get to the end result. And so I think, I think there is a connection for us to discuss that, so is if, if we do approve this particular ground lease, it provides that opportunity, which CDA has already provided interest in and wanting to be able to have access over there. So this, if we didn't and we didn't do the other, this doesn't make, this takes care of it from us having to come back and talk about it. So this particular land lease allows that, but there is a connection, even on the existing land, that Balboa needs to grant access. But there is a connection, even on the existing land, that Balboa needs to grant access to CDA to go across that land for, to obtain its water connection. It has to happen in order for them to make their point of connection.
And I guess I find-
And that'll come up in the next report, even more clearer.
Well, and I guess I need clarification for that, because my understanding is, the city of Norco is the owner of the property. And so, if CDA needs to go across city property, I know as a common courtesy, we would talk to the tenant and do that kind of stuff. But I need clarification on that issue.
Maybe the answer to what you're asking is that the tenant has leased all the surface rights, and we can't allow an easement to go through the property that we've leased without the permission of the tenant.
Okay.
I mean, that's actually was among the discussions in this negotiation, is where that lease was going to be located, because although apparently they've finally decided that there isn't any issue concerning constructing over the lease itself, one of the problems was if it went, because it was originally going to go straight across the property, that it would be impossible to construct any permanent structure, regardless of was, over the easement. And that's one of the reasons why the tenant has to admit to approve the lease location.
Okay. Right. So, this is all pre-Robin, so I'm still trying to grasp all the deals that were made prior to my time. Thank you.
Berwin, anything, staff?
I have no problem with this amendment on it, I think. And if a person has a piece of land and there's water under it, he should have the right to use it. I know that, go back through the centuries, there's a lot of farmers that couldn't have made a living if they couldn't have used the water that was underneath the farm they rented. My dad been one of them. So, I have no problem with this. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, staff, though? Nothing? Okay. Cheryl, do we have any cards on this?
Yes, Mayor. Linda Dixon.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Hit a tone. We're both aging and do remember when water always went with the land. And I'm sure that includes, many residents in this town have wells on their property, and that all went with the land. The one thing that strikes me in this is that, heaven forbid, something should happen, and Silver Lakes would go under. Well, guess what? We own the land. Every improvement this gentleman is making out there, everything that is rewarding our city stays with that property. This is not a deterrent. This is progress. He is having to, this is not free. He is having to do everything that he needs to do financially to get these wells running. That is not cheap. My gosh, we just heard people talk over and over again, our local businesses, how much this enterprise means in their world, which in turn increases our tax base. So, instead of nitpicking, and instead of trying to do everything you can to cause issues, where, and I read the staff report, it said, "No financial impact." We should be behind this. We should be for the progress. This water is going to create, this non-potable water is going to create further improvements to that property, our property. And whatever improvements are out there are our improvements. If he should happen to use some of the groundwater, that is metered, he will pay. I don't see that he is not paying for anything. He's not getting it for free. He's paying through the nose in order to get those wells operational to use non-potable water. So, to me, and I did read the staff report, and having been a businessperson for 47 years, along with working in a large corporation, I kind of see both sides. But this is a no-brainer, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
RJ Brandis?
Good evening, RJ.
How are you, Mayor? How are you, Council? I think there's a subject here that is important to discuss. I think it was an oversight on the eight acres that we didn't mirror at the time, because if you look at intent, and if you look at our development agreement, you'll see that I spent more than two years developing the water rights of this property. I'd gone through a very long problem in Orange County with Joe Irvine Smith and other people about water. So, I was not prepared to move forward on Silver Lakes unless I had water rights. It was a sine qua non for me. So, now that Silver Lakes is up and a large amount has been invested, I feel like I'm sort of, somebody's pulling my skin off. We should have mirrored it, and all the property, all the water we're using goes right back into the ground. And let's say, five or 10 years from now, the decision's made to rethink the unadjudicated water rights. I'm prepared to meter all of my wells, so that we all know what it is, because whatever the amount of water I pump out will be exempt from what you have. So, whatever I'm doing, and since you're not going to pump the wells yourself, will anure to the city of Norco. Because it is your water, it is your land, and the benefits anure to you. So, I don't understand why somebody would look now at trying to figure out why they should take advantage of Silver Lakes, when I've done everything I have promised to deliver to the city, and I think you've heard people say that tonight. And why would you nickel-and-dime me on this eight acres? Because I just don't understand it. I really, I'm puzzled by the intent of that remark. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right. Seeing that, bring it back to council. Start down there, Kevin?
So, I was there for all the water discussions. I was surprised that the eight acres didn't come with the water. I'm satisfied that he will do the monitor, the, sorry, I'm not doing great tonight. The metering. It's interesting that pretty much every well in Norco's been told they need to meter in the event that water is adjudicated. And we're going to have a lot of these meetings over 99 years. There's going to be changes. And what it really comes down to, for me, is the intent was, I believe he was supposed to have the water, and he's putting an infrastructure that should last a long time, and he's putting it in on our property. Normally, if you're building something like this, we would have much more of an input. And I think we're partners. We're partners with Silver Lakes. And so, I'm prepared to approve this. I think it's a good deal for everybody. I think you have to look at the max, maxi picture, the big picture. I think Silver Lakes has been a very, very positive influence in the city of Norco. And the other thing I want to say, too, is that, and I know you all do, we all deal with businesses. I really don't think we're treating this business any differently than we treat anybody else. We all have been bending over backwards since 2010 to literally help every business in Norco to do what they can do to succeed. And as somebody who actually owns businesses, I mean, has a payroll and all that kind of stuff, that's important. And so, again, I'm prepared to support this, and I'll leave it at that.
Greg?
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
January statements, doesn't? Okay. Berwin, back to you.
Can I make a motion?
Well, Steve Robin has anything to say first.
Oh, you skipped her.
Yeah, I did skip her, but she doesn't have anything. Let me say one other thing real quick, finish up, and then you can make your motion. I do appreciate that we have, on this thing, that on the amendment to the Silver Lakes' parking ground lease, we did put the paragraph stating in here, if this water becomes adjudicated, we will, can deal with it. Because that was very important, and we got that done. Also, in the original lease back in 2015, and we talked about the lease premise, on the Article I, it states in there that the subject of the provision of this lease, landlord agrees to lease to tenant, and tenant agrees to lease to landlord, the Silver Lakes parking lot property and all existing, all existing improvements thereon known as lease premises. So, that was everything that was on there, and the wells were on there at that time. So, I can see that the wells were there, they're good, it's part of the property lease. We're just, this is, we should be treating this as cleaning up the paperwork and making sure that we're legal on this thing. So, Berwin, if you want to make a motion?
I move to approve this amendment.
Second.
Have a first and a second?
Please vote. I don't know who voted no.
Jude?
Okay, with Councilmember Newton voting no.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Going on to 5C. This is the approval of right of entry and easement agreement, and this would be Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with the second phase of the planned CDA pipeline that they want to construct, and as Councilman Newton indicated, they were successful in getting their test borehole across the river, the CDA engaged the city in seeking and requesting a right of entry and easement agreement. As part of that work, we did consult and work with Silver Lakes to review the proposed alignment for that easement, to make sure it didn't impact any of the activities beyond Silver Lake as the current leaseholder for that property. Silver Lakes was amenable to the request from CDA as proposed in the agreement here in front of you. The agreement was, was developed by staff and CDA together. It includes generally the three different exhibits. One showing the general place, location of the eight-acre parcels related to city-owned, existing parcels that are owned in that area. It includes the right of entry permit, which is the important document that specifies the conditions of how CDA can operate during construction and also maintenance afterwards. So, they'll have a defined construction period, which right now, per CDA, in agreement with Silver Lakes' request, will be between January 1 of 2019 and through the end of February of 2019. So, basically, they have a two-month period to come in, get the new CDA pipeline constructed, and return the site to its original condition. CDA has indicated they believe that's ample time to complete their work. However, we do have a general understanding that if something does occur, obviously, that's technically during rainy season, things happen. We will work with CDA and Silver Lakes to hopefully accommodate any delays, but they have to be, you know, pretty significant for us to try to alter from that, because Silver Lakes does have planned events after that time. So, we will continue to make sure, leading up to that time period, that CDA is very prepared and ready to go when it comes after Christmas time, that they are mobilized and moving, so that there is not any impact to Silver Lakes. The, otherwise, that potentially could come back as different agreement if it becomes a problem, or they have future delays, that we may have to modify this as far as the window time period they can do work. So, it specifically talks about, you know, the activities they can do, the areas that they can use for ingress and egress while under construction, they're not to impact the main entrance, and use that as their thoroughfare. They're going to come off that southerly portion, there's an entry gate there. They're going to develop a specific site area that's going to be fenced off for the work, so they're isolated from Silver Lakes' activities during the time of their construction. And it specifically calls for them to make sure they're abiding by any requirements for fishing game and wildlife related to any impacts they may have due to their operations. Staff will be monitoring what CDA is doing and when, and working with Silver Lakes to make sure everybody's communicating properly, so we're aware of what's going on and when, and the activities are done appropriately. The activities that are outlined in the entry agreement afterwards basically outline what CDA can do in relation to maintenance of that line once it's in. Silver Lakes requested, and CDA granted, that it not be a traditional utility easement, which normally prevents any physical permanent structures over the easement. The, so, CDA feels that that shouldn't be an issue for them. They do have a potential future plan at this time, that they may go through the new bridge when it comes in. So, they'll have a dual line, so that at some point, they may end up not using the line under the river. But that's a potential. They haven't committed 100% to using the bridge. But basically, trying to accommodate Silver Lakes' potential of maybe building any particular improvements in the future, they were cognizant and were willing to provide that agreement for Silver Lakes could build over their easement without any issues, and they were fine with And then, we also have the, as Exhibit C, the legal description of permanent easement that was prepared by CDA and staff reviewed. It does have the map indicating the general alignment of where that's going to occur. And again, it's going to go from the north side at Silver Lakes, coming across the river, and ending up at their current proposed connection, which is Old Hamner Road, at the end of Old Hamner Road. And so, we will, the city, with the council approves this agreement. CDA has already approved adoption of this easement agreement, including to also the dewatering well agreement that we previously discussed. The city will execute this easement and submit it to the county registrar, so that we can get it recorded, so that we have it marked down. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this item.
Berwin, you have any questions, staff?
No, it's time.
Robin?
Just a clarification, Chad. If it's rainy season or stuff happens, several of us have dealt with construction projects before, and I don't think I've ever been a part of one that stayed on a timeline. So, does this have to come back to us for amendments? Or how does that work? If it's, if CDA's not in that two-month window, what is the process for? Is that just between city staff and Silver Lakes staff, or?
We would, we would, the general answer is yes. I would like to make sure that we're, the city staff is working with CDA, because it could be a matter of a few days, it could be a matter of a few months, depending on what they're projecting or needing to do, if they're delayed because of, they may try it, and then hit an impediment, again, they didn't realize was there when they did their little borehole, and it just happens. Things can happen, and we would look at it as a case-by-case basis, whether or not we need to come back and modify the agreement. We really put it in here specifically for Silver Lakes, so that we can at least give them a starting point, as far as for CDA, at Silver Lakes' request, that we want to make sure they start at a certain time. And because it didn't impact their events at that point, afterwards, we may have to talk with them about what we would accommodate, whether they continue to work, or they have to come back at another time. But we'll work with CDA and make sure we're keeping up with the schedule, so that if we know there's a delay, we may just stop altogether and pick a new time to do it. And we may come back and simply inform the council, there was a delay, we've come up with an alternative schedule, here's what's, where it's going to occur, and move forward with that project as an informational item.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin?
Greg? Realizing how important this is to the residents, my question is this, when you prepared this, this is a permanent right of entry, the easement?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's start at right of entry. Come off Hamner Avenue, for the last four years, there has been a temporary asphalt berm pushed up against the curb face.
Correct.
That's been temporary for four years. Okay? Where is the remedy in these documents and/or the drawings on the easement? Where's the remedy to show a concrete drive approach in lieu of the temporary asphalt? as an entry point?
Good question. We?
Let me?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. And not outside of that, but on the opposite side of Hamner Avenue on the west, closer to Citrus, is a, I'm going to assume a JCSD, a point of entry. Okay? I think you're familiar with JCSD and, and what they would require. Okay? So, with that, then it got me thinking, were the Hamner Avenue improvements done with tump fees?
The Hamner Avenue improvements, the existing ones?
Yeah, when we did that, when we did the Causeway, when we did the, the widening, the JCSD side, which is professionally done, would that have been covered with tump fees? I'm, I'm trying to find a solution on, I'm going to let you answer the question, but it's, who's going to pay for it?
Okay.
Because it's not addressed in any of these documents.
It's a good question. I'll go back to your, your original first question. We evaluated the existing driveway approach that they're using, you know, basically it's, it's been a long-term, meant to be short-term, construction access area. And as part of this, we looked at whether or not we would have them put in a permanent driveway approach. However, after considering the bridge that's going to come through is going to be beginning in mid to the end of 2020, we felt it was not necessary at this time to build a permanent driveway approach. We certainly can require that of CDA, and I think they'd be fine with doing that as a, an improvement or amendment to their, to their work or scope of work. I don't think that's a significant issue for CDA because we, we already had the general discussions, but we kind of pointed out that, does it make sense to construct it when it's going to be completely removed when the new bridge is, is built? And that's one of the reasons why I put in the agreement that when that access point becomes unavailable in the future, which it will, because that portion of the bridge and, will be 10 feet higher than it is now, they won't be able to get that access point. So we want to make it clear that you could now enter through the primary entrance with advanced notice, so that it wasn't just you come in whenever you feel like and go into that area. They still have to notify Silver Lakes that they need to come on-site unless it's an emergency, and what their, what activities they're doing on that property. So that was the rationale of why we didn't make a permanent improvement on the road was because of the pending future improvements that are going to be done with the bridge.
If you want to, I don't, I'm going to, if you want to listen to cards, yeah. Do you have any cards?
No cards on this item.
Okay, bringing it back. It's up to you.
I'd like you to go back to the CDA on that because to hinge it, a temporary measure on bridge construction, after what we saw on the River Road Bridge where it took 10 years to get approvals, I wouldn't be that secure that they will start construction in 2020. Things change. And I hate to see a temporary measure just keep dragging on and on and on.
Understood, and I don't think they have a problem with that. It's a very small condition.
Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome, sir.
So however we vote on this, I would like that noted or amended on this recommendation or resolution.
Just, just include it in your motion.
So that would be included, Exhibit B then, on the conditions?
Correction, staff.
Okay. All right. Burwin, you got anything?
Yeah, on that, I know things happen on construction and everything, but you said like the River Road Bridge took 16 years instead of 10. This one has to be completed by 2023 because of the way the money was funded. And if you remember, several months ago, we had to make some resolutions on this, that this, all this money we got was going to be spent by a certain date, and that, that was one of them, isn't that right, Andy?
That is correct.
So that should be, unless this thing gets appealed, that the money we're getting and everything, which I don't know that it will, this thing, the construction should move forward and they should be done, otherwise, nobody gets any of the money.
Okay, Robin, do you have anything? Kevin?
I have.
Okay, Craig, back to you.
And I'll agree with you, Burwin. My concern is in 2020 that Kevin Delone, or whatever his name is, is President of the United States. Okay, things change.
Before, before I take a motion on this, we're going to take a five-minute break so, for technical difficulties before we make, take a motion, so she can fix the voting machine. All right. So don't say anything more until we vote. All right, I'll go back to this thing. Are you entertaining a motion?
Motion.
A first and a second? So we vote and by roll call, or the machine? Answers that.
Okay, please vote. All right, there we go. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to five D. This is the approval of Amendment Number Two to the Development Agreement for the Silver Lakes Equestrian and Sports Park Project. This would be?
I'll present on that.
Okay.
Yes. Before I start, I'd like to point out that my, my presentation on this report would also apply to Item Number Five E. The subject, the subject matter on this is the same. This item is a recommendation to the City Council to approve amendment to the Development Agreement as well as the, the ground lease agreement for the 122-acre Silver Lakes property to reflect the list of improvements that were contemplated to be made on the projects. So when the agreement was entered into in 2011, there were certain improvements, tenant improvements that were required to be made by Silver Lakes on the property. In 2015, back in 2011, to go back, those improvements were listed in Phases One and Phase Two. In 2015, those improvements were reformatted into Phase One A and One B, and in that amendment, in Phase One A and Phase One B, there were required improvements, and there were also non-mandatory improvements. As of today, all the required, which I would also call mandatory improvements, have been substantially completed for, to staff's satisfaction. Consequently, Exhibit C to the Development Agreement and Exhibit G to the Ground Lease Agreement are recommended to be amended to reflect the improvements that have actually been completed on the property. With respect to those amendments, those improvements that are required, there are two items that are required that have not been completed by Silver Lakes, primarily because these improvements are no, no longer needed for, for the operations of Silver Lakes at this particular time. Item number one includes, is a recreational vehicle, campground, and trailer parking. Item number two is a multi-purpose building or covered arena with a footprint of plus or minus 135,000 square feet. Barbois has determined that this, these two improvements are no longer currently needed to operate the Silver Lakes property. However, Barbois has also constructed some improvements that were not contemplated under the list of improvements that we agreed to in 2011, as well as the amendment in 2015. Some of those improvements include the backyard, the traffic flow delineation that is constructed on Hamner Avenue, which was paid by Barbois. The U-turn on Slashman was also paid by Barbois, as well as the dual left turn on Citrus and Hamner Avenue. There are several exhibits that have been attached to the staff report for your review. Exhibit A is a list of all those improvements that were required under the amendment in 2015, includes the mandatory as well as the non-mandatory improvements. And Exhibit A also includes those items that have been added in addition to the required improvements. And what also is included in this Exhibit A is to make sure that we have a confirmation as to whether these required improvements have been completed or not, we're required staff to go out on-site to review what has been actually completed on the project, and staff has identified in this Exhibit A their comments pertaining to the completion of those improvements that are required and those improvements that are not mandatory. The first step in the process required actually Silver Lakes to provide us a list of what has been completed, and then staff went out and confirmed those improvements. As I noted earlier in the report, there are only two required improvements that have not been completed yet. We have also attached Exhibit B, which depicts the current site map for all the improvements that are currently developed on the Silver Lakes property. And finally, we have attached Exhibit C, as well as Exhibit G, in the next report, which lists all those improvements that have actually been completed on the Silver Lakes property. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the amendment to schedule Exhibit C as well as Exhibit G in order to reflect those improvements that have actually been completed. I do want to note here that if the City Council approves this amendment, this will lead to the refund of the security deposit that Silver Lakes or Barbois made, made when they entered into this lease agreement. Section 3.3 of the Ground Lease Agreement requires the city to refund this money upon completion of Phases One and Phases Two, which are later on described as Phase One A and One B. And, and these monies have been kept in the city's general fund as a deposit and would be refunded to Barbois upon City Council approval of the recommended amendment to Schedule C and Schedule D. Schedule C and Schedule G. With that, I complete my presentation, and I'll be able to take any questions.
I'll start down there. Kevin, do you have any questions, staff?
Thank you.
Craig?
Andy, you mentioned that this $200,000 has been kept in the general fund?
$198,000.
Okay, $198,000 has been kept in the general fund?
That's correct.
Is that a specific set-aside account?
For accounting purposes, yes. It's in a deposits account for Silver Lakes.
Okay, so, have we been spending this money? Will this reflect a deficit in our general fund?
No, when this money is, we are taking it, then we are accounted as a deposit. We didn't put them as revenue, and when they go out, it will be a separate liability that the city has that it would need now to be fulfilled when this refund is made, and no impact on revenue or expenditures. They're not accounted that way.
I have one question, and, and this is on the Phase One B improvements on the bridle path and that, that Silver Lakes has completed their obligation. City is working with JCSD on connection of a trail system from Levy to Causeway, internal trail system to open when completed. What is our schedule with JCSD and completing the trail system through the Causeway?
We hope to be open by, or have a tentative opening by the end of the fiscal year related to that, from the Causeway to the actual Levy. We're working currently with JCSD related to, once we, once we get out of the Causeway and we go west onto that particular trail, we've all agreed on how we're going to have a path of travel there. The, the one thing that we will be bringing back is an agreement between us and JCSD because we're going to be sharing that particular joint easement area in relationship that they'll be crossing onto their existing trails that are there. There's still work that'll be done. We met with the county last week in relationship to improvements that are related to that trail associated to the bridge. There's actually going to be a pedestrian, a cresting crossing that will actually drop down into Silver Lakes, which will provide access to the Causeway as well. So we're all working together cooperatively to try and make that happen. There's some other improvements that JCSD and us are working on, which are related to the bicycle path and the connection from there at the Causeway up to the north part of their property connecting to Citrus. So some of those things are still in progress. We'll bring back probably that delineation for you. We've also met with our equestrian groups related to that connection, and so we'll continue to work with them, and they also have a commitment to assist us in opening that particular trail section.
Okay. So you think by July, then?
That's my goal.
Okay. And then that, then we'll be able to complete, hopefully that complete interface with Silver Lakes?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Robin?
Just for clarification, Exhibit A, does that go in as like part of the report and legal documents of what we've agreed to?
Yes.
Okay, so then I need clarification. Under Phase One B improvements that shall be done, picnic areas is listed, it's listed as uncompleted, but under the city's response, obviously the large concession tent and portable concessions are available. So does that still get left as uncompleted or negotiated out, or what? Because I read uncompleted as not done, which if both parties have agreed that that's not going to be done, you know, one down below says a future phase or different things like that, so I don't know. I just want clarification for legal.
I think the intent is they're going to, they're going to relook at how they originally, when we did this 10 years ago, there was a different thought than, and as you go through operational process, you learn that certain things are not going to work as well, and so the, the model and how we do that later will be discussed. But for right now, what was thought of 10 years ago as a picnic area or picnic bench is just probably wouldn't work the way it is set up now. So if there's things done, it'll be probably discussed, and it'll probably come up more so in, in, and once the, what we would call the future phase or the ranch is developed and how that would play into the whole scheme.
Right, and I completely get that. I'm simply asking for legal definitions as far as vocabulary on a report that's going to go and be a final thing, so that the next person sitting on this council doesn't have the questions that I have all the time. That's all I'm asking for. So if it's a future phase, why doesn't it say future phase like the other ones say future phase instead of uncompleted? Or just we're not going to do it, like a strike-through or something, so it matches?
So let me make sure. On the Schedule C, which is the attachment to the legal document, under Phase, Phase One A, that is not a listed item.
Right. It's under Phase One B. Improvements shall include the following.
Right, so under?
It's the third one down.
Yeah, so under Phase One B, on the list that is to be made part of the legal documents, which is this schedule here.
So this is not going to be a legal?
That's what's a walk in paper now.
Okay, so that was my question. If this is not the legal document?
That's not going to be recorded, no.
Okay, that's what I was, just told two minutes ago.
The only thing that can be recorded is the exhibit.
Okay, so then it's not a legal document. Okay, which is fine, because my thing was, if this is legal, it needs to be correct. If this is what we're looking at, then my answer is clarified on that. Thank you. So then, let's see, then the other one that would fall under that same kind of category would be Phase Two, as listed on Exhibit A, the earthen and concrete viewing berm. So I'm going to assume, since it is not on? So I'm going to assume, since it is not on Exhibit C, it's not an issue. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then that's all I have for right now.
Robin?
Nothing.
I just have one question, and that kind of goes back to Robin's point. On your Exhibit C, you have permanent lighting, which shall be, and then you refer back into your working document as portable, so staff is capping with the fact, because I know there's portable lighting used out there. So you're okay with, based upon this, that we've met, they've met the requirements for permanent lighting then?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I'm just making sure. All right, any cards on the show?
Yes, Mayor, I just want clarification. Since both items, D and E, were presented together, do you want to hear public comments?
If we already did, that's okay with council then? Okay.
Okay, Karen Leonard?
Evening, Karen.
Mr. Harper, it would really be helpful if you used your mic, because several times tonight we have not been able to hear you. So if you could put that a little bit closer, we have trouble hearing you back there.
That's intentional.
I had a feeling it was. That's why I brought it to your attention. Recorded. Right, okay. Just had a couple of comments about this. And being in construction, I fully understand how items change and phases change and things like that. So I understand they would be changing. I was really disappointed to see about the campground and the picnic areas. Those were big selling items when this project came in, that they're either not going to be completed at all or at another time. Completed at River Trails. Now, this is based on, we have an MOU for an EIR that has not been completed, but we are basing a refund and changing phases based on this information for this being approved. To me, that's projecting a lot out there on something that we have no idea that's going to be approved, how it's going to work with the freeway expansion, how it's going to work with any of the construction out there. That could be years and years out. So my concern is, why would you, or question would be, why would you at this point, because these are part of a phase that's not going to be completed, you don't know if they're going to be completed based on, because we don't know what's going to happen, why would we at this point refund a deposit? That doesn't make any sense to me. We keep deposits for a specific reason. That's to ensure that the work is done. So if we're going to move those out of the phase and say, work's not done, we don't know if it's ever going to be done, we're going to do it sometime when this happens, to me that makes no sense. So my recommendation would be, hold the deposit. And another thing, if we're waiting for the city to complete the bridle trails and things like that, you're holding up that portion of the deposit, not Silver Lakes. That's the city holding it up. So just something I would at this point recommend not returning the deposit, that is the incentive to get these things completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
RJ Brandis?
Good evening again, RJ.
Nice to see you again. First of all, the project started as a theoretical project. There is no comp for Silver Lakes. There's never been anything done like this. It's very hard to envision a project this big and make sure everything happens. Most of the things that have been left out were not requirements of the city. There wasn't a requirement for 135,000 square foot building. It was my wish to do it. First of, and second of all, we have one of the largest picnic grounds out there, which is the backyard. We're having picnics all the time in the backyard, people eating in the backyard, we have all sorts of other things that were put in. We had a desire to put a sign up, but we weren't required to put a sign up in Phase 1A or B. We put a very valuable sign up, which is more than a million dollars of, not million dollars, maybe $600,000 of cost, which the benefit goes to the city for all of their events, and I didn't have a requirement to do that. But I thought it was needed for the, for our park, and I thought it was needed for the city. So I think there's a balancing act here of things that happen with a property like this. It is our intent to build the biggest equestrian facility on the 26 or 24 acres, and that would include more camping area, because in that is proposed 54 triple spaces, which we very much want to have. We really feel that the facility that we built for a whole bunch of reasons, which we didn't understand, because we, I didn't at that time live in Norco. Effectively, I live in Norco now. I spend almost every day here, at least three or four hours to run this project. I've abandoned many of my other businesses to get this project up. I'm 75 years old this year. And I'm saying that you can't take everything so literally. There will be changes, as people have mentioned tonight, as we go along with this project. You have to have good faith that both of us are acting with the best of intentions. And I certainly think I've demonstrated, because I put a lot of money into your town, and I sort of questioned, that anyone would question my willingness to do the right thing. We did an event this last weekend, heartfelt, where we did it for the kids, and 200 kids were scanned free at our property, because there's a problem in the United States of people, kids dying on fields, and we thought that Silver Lakes should be part of that process. 70 million people saw the video, which had some of the council members in that video. And it's about the exposure that the city's getting with Silver Lakes. And I just think that we're going to continually have these conversations for another 90 years. It's just, it's just the way a project is built. And this project is, there's nothing to compare it to. So I don't understand why we're balancing out, I didn't get this, I didn't get that. I think it got more than you thought for your money so far. That's just my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you, RJ.
Pat Dover Street?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, I am not a businesswoman. That's no surprise to any of you that know me. Forty years of nursing in retirement, my qualifications are, I can throw a really great garden party, and I do really nice table decorations. My background in civic affairs is based on your deliberations, your questions, your discussions, the things that you hash out, that I sit to fairly religiously every time you have a council meeting and planning commission also. So that's where I, to try to pull up a staff report and read it, I get a headache. I just can't do it. But I want you to know, in my 40 years of living in this town, Silver Lakes has been one of the greatest things we've done for ourselves. And I finally sat down with relatives from San Diego who came for the weekend for a soccer match. As many times as I've been over there and just, I have to tell you, my routine on Sunday, I go to church, then I go to Dairy Queen and get a vanilla cone, and then I drive by Silver Lakes and see how many cars are out there, and it's always packed. But I got a call from a nephew who said, we're coming up to Silver Lakes for, do I know where that is? I said, yes, I know where it is. Brought my chair and my umbrella and sat there with my nephew, his wife, and watched my grandnephew play from San Diego. They came up, they went home. I didn't know they went home to San Diego. They could have stayed at my house if they didn't get a hotel room. Next year, they're going to just bunk at my place. But it's the first time I sat and watched it. They were just absolutely enthralled with the whole accomplishment of the event area. They just thought it was fantastic. And, you know, coming up from San Diego twice, I thought that was pretty impressive. I just wanted, want to lend my support to this entire project. And whatever it is that they come up with over there to improve it, I've attended some of the horse events, a party at the backyard, I've been up for dinner at the field house. I think it's a great, great accomplishment, and I just hope we can continue to just build on it and make it even better. I won't be here in the 99 years it's finished, but I'll be watching.
You probably will, Pat. All right, thank you.
That concludes public comments.
All right, and bring it back to council. Let me start down there, Kevin. Greg, anything else?
Yeah, a couple things. Andy, on this Exhibit A, correct me if I'm wrong, the additional improvements by Silver Lakes, and you talk about the backyard, that, which is a wonderful facility and area, in the original development agreement, I believe that they were allowed like an entertainment area? And I want to make sure my assumption is correct on that.
Well, again, Exhibit A lists all the improvements that were contemplated under the original development agreement.
Yeah, I understand what was completed. It seems like you're making this an additional improvement.
So what I'm saying is that if the item is not listed in this Exhibit A, then it was not included in the original development agreement or the ground lease agreement.
But I guess what I'm getting, and I don't have heartburn about it, because I like it, is that I believe they were entitled to an entertainment area, as with the development of the backyard, okay? None of those items have ever gone to the planning commission, okay, that they're treated by staff. And the reason they don't have to go to the planning commission is it's been, let's say, somewhat entitled in the first plan. Okay?
Right, you know, I think what I'm saying is that we are not specifically the backyard or, that future is not specifically listed in the, in the list of contemplated improvements when their development agreement and/or the ground lease agreements we're entering into.
I think they've been entitled to have that, that use all along. So regardless, it's, I think my, my biggest concern on this is that when, when this project was first presented years and years ago, the centerpiece was the barn, 131,000 square foot building, 60 foot tall, the equestrian event center, and with other uses. That was the centerpiece of this entire project, the way it was presented, along with the soccer and all the other amenities we see. I understand the plans change, they're fluid, and I certainly accept that. That is a big-ticket item, and it's going to move into the future phase. That's right now where we have the MOU and the feasibility study. The schedule on the feasibility study that was given to us in the MOU was 200 days for the environmental, the MOU. And that was a schedule by their consultant. We are approximately 150 days into that 200-day schedule. So it seems to me that we should be seeing the results within the next couple of months of those studies. And when, I'm just going to make that comment, and then when you go ahead and finish your discussion, I'm going to make a separate motion. Thank you.
Robin, anything else?
I guess just for clarification, it was mentioned that we shouldn't take everything so literally, but I'm going to say when I'm reading contracts and legal documents, I'm going to take them literally. I take this job very seriously. I do a lot of reading, and it takes me a lot of time in reaching out to staff and doing that stuff. You know, and I get the big picture, and I get that things change. But when we're talking about a contract, to me, that's different than a vision or an idea or something like that. So I just wanted to clarify that. And my main concern with Exhibit A was making sure it wasn't a legal document for purposes beyond today. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the multi-purpose building or covered arena on Exhibit A is listed as a requirement on the paperwork that I have in front of me. So that's all I have.
Robin?
Nothing.
All right. You know, and I'm going to bring this back, because I don't want to go tit-for-tat, but I grabbed the original ground lease. And just so you know, it, up to, we got up to 25 full-size soccer fields, up to six sand rings for horseback riding or sand sports, equestrian competition showgrounds, I think that's what you're referring to, the portable restroom facilities, internal private public bridle trails, gated entrances on Hamner Avenue, parking areas, RV campground, trailer parking, picnic areas, permanent temporary lighting, water holding tanks, multi-purpose building with a covered arena with a footprint of 135,000 square feet, earth and concrete viewing berms, entry features including identification signage, lake, other water features, garden reception areas, two water wells, and internal directional and informational signage, business offices, storage, and maintenance. That was out of the original one. And then there was an amendment back in 2015, the first amendment to this agreement, that listed what was going to be done and the improvements that were there. And it also had some of the same things, but I just want to note that, the comment was made, that it was part of it. And I will agree, I'm a little disappointed that the equestrian facility has not been as what we thought it was going to be. But as things say, this is a fluid deal and things change. The fact that, who would have known that there's such a difference environment on that corner from the wind changes up there at the park? You don't know that until you get to do the day-to-day operation of the facility and what happens. If I recall, even Ingalls Park, originally, everybody thought this was the greatest thing, we're going to have an outside arena. And now today, we have two covered arenas in there. Things change. People change. The usage change. I can guarantee you that no one wants, even though Kathy's doing a good job out there putting that, those horse shows on there, let's face it, we're in Southern California, we're a bunch of weenies, and we want to have covered arenas, and they work in the shade. We don't want to be out there in the sun. And that happens. Things change. And I'm sure this, as, as the ground changes and the, hopefully we'll get through there. I am concerned that the C I R has taken longer than it has done. But with that said, we have to admit, we have a pretty classy facility over there. We're over half a million people visiting here. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for the two.
Motion approved.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Greg, go ahead.
But I'd like my motion to be, would be that we continue this item off calendar until we see the results of the feasibility study and the MOU, based on that the, the schedule that we were given, it should only be a couple of more months till we see those studies. And then that would be able to, that's, that's enough of a motion. The rest of it's just reasoning that then we'll be able to see if we can move forward on the covered arenas and the barn area.
Have a second. Only no second. Motion fails.
Okay, then it goes back to the first motion made by Councilmember Bash and seconded by Councilmember Hannah to approve.
You going to move?
Please vote.
Okay. So we're only voting right now for just clarification? This would be 5D, correct? Okay.
5D.
Okay, that motion passes on a vote of 3-2, with Councilmember Greg Newton voting no and Mayor Pertem Robin Grunmeyer voting no.
So you need a motion on the, on 5E, the?
Okay, that motion passes on a vote of 3-2 with Councilmember Greg Newton voting no and Mayor Pertem Robin Gudmeyer voting no.
So you need a motion on the, on 5E, the... Your first and second?
Okay, please vote.
Roxy voter.
Okay, that motion passes a 3-2. Councilmember Greg Newton voting no and Mayor Pertem Robin Gudmeyer voting no.
I conclude those two items then. I know it's customary to take a break, but since we only have one other measure going, we will continue. 5-7? Let me, 5F?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is talking about one of the issues we deal with in the city, which is infrastructure improvements. In this case, it's talking about our street signage. As you may have seen around the city, we've certainly got some street signage that's missing, street signage that is worn, faded, lost its color, or it's basically cracking. And that includes our residential street signs that's on the posts versus our overhanging signs that are on the, at the intersections. So one of the projects we had implemented in this current CIP was to begin remedying that issue and starting a replacement of all the city signs and getting them up to current codes and just getting them in better condition. We elected to begin that work with the overhead street signs. One of the issues, and the primary issues with those is their lack of visibility as a, at night and reflectability. If I could, can I get the presentation, Cheryl? So what we did is we did some preliminary work during the first part of the year because we don't have a current standard for illuminated street signs, if we're going to go that route. So we looked and investigated that work. And some of the issues we're currently having with existing signs, which are metal facade signs with basically a luminar label, a layer on there that has the vellum basically, which is the color and for the lettering and whatnot, that you see peeling now. So we basically are suffering from cracking and peeling, no reflectivity as required by the state at this point because they're cracking. It's not visible at night, even with the safety lighting that we have on a lot of our poles for where our intersections are at, you really don't see them. And they've actually had quite a few that got damaged due to the high winds that we get through our city. So we want to look at something that was basically, you know, here's some examples. Here's on Forest Street, this is kind of what we're seeing. Here's one on Hamner, definitely worse. And then here's an example of what we have right now on, I think it's, I think that's Alhambra is where it's missing. So I took that picture actually this morning. So I have to, we've got a request to get that sign replaced temporarily. So again, that's a common thing because of the way those signs are on those mast arms, they're not very rigid. They actually move quite a bit, and eventually they snap. So that's one of the considerations we did when we came up with the design for the new signs that we're proposing tonight. And what we're recommending is to go to illuminated street signs, and you commonly see, you know, goes through the cities, Eastville has them, Corona has them. So we're kind of coming into the modern era of signs. They will be LED, so they have a low power demand. We already have power at these lights, so we're not bringing something new in. We're using the existing power that's at each pole, so that's not a major issue. It's definitely will provide visibility at night. They're a clean engineered appearance, and we'll show you some of those examples. And they're easy to maintain as far as the spec that we created and how they can be maintained. Sure, light goes out, or even if a panel comes off, they're easy to fix. And actually, in the bid that came through with the warranty that we're going to, we got a warranty of a seven-year. Most of the other bidders, traditionally industry, it's about five, and they're actually giving a seven-year warranty, which is really good. And then this was, this proposal, as far as the concept of using LED illuminated signs, was reviewed and approved by the STUT Committee several months ago. That's why we continue the process to come up with the current standard that we have. This is an example of, and these are clean illuminated signs, meaning traditionally, a lot of the signs you'll see over the last 10, 20 years, they're like an A-frame where they're angled kind of towards the drivers. These are a clean look, square look, they're LED signs. They look really nice in the communities that I've seen. So we went with this type of version, you know, so it's really simple. Right now, this particular one shows you it's on an existing mast arm that we had to show before. We're going to actually put ours on dabbet arms, which actually raises it higher. It's more visible for vehicles. And this is an example at night. This is the one I took in Eastville near my home. It's hard to see the dabbet arm itself, but basically, and what they've done there is they actually use cables, which we're not using. I don't promote the use of cables. They can still swing quite a bit. But this is what the image would be, at least when we're driving. It's clearly illuminated look. You can see it from a much farther distance to identify what road you're coming up to. And it's very square. Everyone will have the dabbet arm that goes across the pole and the look-wise and how it will be held on there with specific brackets that we've had designed so that there really is almost no movement of that sign other than with the hinges that we'll have on there. It's not going to have a long bracket. It'll be basically back, dabbeted and hinged right at the arm itself. But that's the general look that we're going for. It's the same color that we're proposing, lettering. So the renderings that the consultants, or excuse me, the contractor provided, we did get three proposals in. We reviewed those proposals to see how they matched our standard that we developed. Two of the three were deemed as non-responsive because they didn't meet the minimum requirements. And in your packet, we've highlighted those as a review, so you can see where they were deficient on the areas we wanted to make sure they maintained. So, and part of this, the renderings, is they gave us what it would look like, plus the logo or the seal that we wanted. So we came up with three different options that we wanted the council to consider and give us their buy-on before they actually get constructed. The current one, which is the logo, the seal, this is generally what you're going to see as far as how it's done through the alley, through the existing new signs that are going to come in. Then we have the Hometown USA emblem, as far as how it would look. And then the last one is simply with no emblem, as far as which one. And so what we're seeking as part of this discussion is, is if there's approval of this contract, is also a decision about what you would like to see as the new standard for having an emblem or not, and which one you'd want to have. So keep that in mind, but these are the three renderings we came up with. Project costs, again, this is going to be done in different phases as far as, we're going to purchase these directly from the vendor, so we avoid the markup from a contractor as far as purchasing them for us. That purchase price right now is $60,340 from the most responsive bidder. However, I do expect that price to go down in that right now, for bidding purposes, we required everyone to bid eight-foot signs, which unfortunately, one of them didn't, so they were in, they weren't deemed responsive. The other one did. We may end up making the signs a little shorter because, for example, on Sixth Street, Sixth Street doesn't need necessarily eight feet. It's kind of extra space. So we may go down to six, which will reduce the cost a little bit. So we'll make all the Sixth Street ones standard at that size, but we'll make all the cross-street ones still eight, so they're uniform. We don't want to keep going. What we have right now is we have some that are four, some that are five, some that are seven. Having somewhat uniformity helps, it makes it easier on replacement, especially if a lens comes out, it's easy to replace. We're not, rather than going, is it a four, is it a six? We'll know. So right now, the plan is everything is eight feet, uniformity, but we may, to get a little extra cost savings, go to six feet on all the Sixth Street signs specifically, because that way they'll all be uniform, six feet all the way across down from Crestview all the way to Sierra. So there's some potential savings there. Then we're going to have Siemens, our existing streetlight and sign maintenance contractor that's currently under contract with us for the next couple of years. We basically got a T&amp;M quote from them to do the installation of these signs. Again, I still, I do expect savings in this quote too for the signs themselves. This includes removing our old signs, putting the new ones up, wiring for power. They're also purchasing the dabbet arm. I do expect savings in the dabbet arm. They, and in the quote, they specify, they kind of took the highest quote that they've gotten from various vendors. They do expect when they buy them in bulk, it will come in cheaper. And I've done my own homework on those. I expect it to come in cheaper than what they promoted. Plus, there'll be some cost savings on the amount of hours they're actually out there with their trucks and staff. So again, this is just a ballpark number, but I do expect that number to go down. Part of this project also is we're taking advantage of the fact they're already out there updating the signal, the signs, is that we're going to actually install EVP, which is the emergency vehicle preemption, which is important for emergency response. They use that on their trucks to basically change the signal in the direction they're going so that they can quickly get through the intersections faster and respond to emergencies. There's currently four intersections that have EVP along that route of Sixth Street. Needs to be five more installed. Each of those, right now projected is about $5,000 to $6,000, almost, actually $6,000 to do, a little more than that. Again, we do anticipate there might be a little bit of savings because they're going to do that work in conjunction with being out there for the LED sign installation. So some of the labor that they're quoting on that as an individual item will not be necessary. So total project cost at this point, we don't expect to exceed $184,000. So I should say that the ISNS signs are being funded from street funds that have already been budgeted. The EVP portion of this will be funded from the Fire Department Fund, Capital Improvement Fund. And there is sufficient funds in both of these funds. And the final cost anticipated to be less, as I indicated before, because it is a T&amp;M project, and they were very conservative on their estimate. We think it's going to be lower. And they've consistently done that with other projects they've done. They've not actually billed us for what they projected it to be because they do it on T&amp;M. And then, just to give an overall understanding of what we're proposing as far as the projects for this year, we're looking to do between Sixth Street and along Sixth Street, including North Drive and Crestview. So we're getting a certain port of town done next year in 2018, '19. As far as the budget process, I'm looking to propose funding that will do all of Hamner, all the other locations that we have, LED signs, anything that, it's our responsibility on Hidden Valley, and even down at Silver Lakes, as far as, I know they have an LED sign, or a sign right now, but it doesn't have our emblem on it. If we want to change it, we can. Something we'll look at and consider. Right now, it just says Silver Lakes on it. So we're going to basically promote, propose to do all the non-completed LED signs, overhead signs, next year that we don't do out, that's part of the Sixth Street project. And then for the third year, 1920, we will put funding in to replace all the residential signs and adding them everywhere we can, because some of them are missing. So we will do that portion of the project afterward. That's a pretty big one to get all those signs done. So give you an idea of what our plan of attack is and how we're going to finish everything. Prior to, let me get, and just to review the staff report itself, again, our initial bids for the LED signs, we did have three bidders, two were non-responsive. The lowest bidder was JTB Supply Company, and for $60,340. So staff is seeking the council to approve and accept that bid and authorize a purchase order in that amount. We're also asking for City Council to give us their recommendation related to either the city seal or the Horsetown USA logo, or not to have one at all on the street signs, and give us your preference on that. And then lastly, to approve the quote that was from Siemens to install the signs and also install the EVP. A total cost for that work for Siemens is $124,373.40. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Greg, do you have any questions, Chad? Kevin? Robin?
Just clarification, Chad. When you were talking, you said Sixth Street to Sierra, but then it also says Sixth Street. All of the intersections of Sixth Street, are you going to Hamner or are you going to Sierra?
Just Sierra and Crestview.
Okay.
And then we're going to do Hamner when we do all of Hamner.
Okay, so the one that's, oh, there is, there's not a lighted sign to go onto the freeway at those lights, is there?
There is a light obviously at the, at the, both the on-ramps and off-ramps.
But there's no sign.
But that is jurisdiction of Caltrans.
Oh, okay.
And we did not approach them about changing those signs at this time.
Okay.
Because I need to build that up because they take forever.
Right.
But I'm going to, I do plan on recommending, and again, they're going to say it's fine, we have to pay for it.
Right.
But I'll make it part of the next project.
The Hamner project?
Yeah.
And so the EVPs would go with Hamner then for those two lights?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're going to, and part of the Hamner project, when we do that, we're going to work with Fire Department, determine where they want EVP, if they want it on the entire stretch, or if they just want it in certain intersections that are key.
Okay.
We'll look at that. But at this point, they determined all of Sixth Street is preferred.
Okay, thank you.
Robin?
No.
Chad, I've got a couple of questions. We don't use solar on these, do we, or is that...
No, these will all be powered by the existing power that comes from the streetlight.
Okay. And also, we're going to change the lettering size. If you look at Sixth Street and then you look at Norco Drive, they split that sign. I always get comments, it's hard to read, people miss Norco Drive.
Right.
So you're going to split that again, or would that be separate?
Yeah, and when we get to that one for next fiscal year, again, what we're going to look at is how we can clearly show both names, but on a wider sign.
Okay.
Yeah, so that they're all a much, the equal size. So they all should be eight inches tall in the capital letters and six inches on the lower letter. So it'll be the same, because we have to meet that per-state requirement. So we can't have small little letters on the same-sized sign. We're going to have to make a bigger sign.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any cards in this, Cheryl?
Yes.
Pat!
I don't know what I'm listening to.
Thank you, Pat.
I was just waiting.
Any other cards, Cheryl?
No more cards on this.
All right. So we're going to back to council. Any other comments?
It's a lot of money, but it's a life safety issue. I went on the tour with the chief here, and it's very important that our fire people can see. And I like the top one, the historic one, because that's a horse, but it also says Norco, so that's my two cents.
I guess I'll go with the round one.
Okay. Oh, the seal.
The seal, yeah.
Okay.
Compared to the Horsetown. On the EVP, I don't know. It's, the other day, I had the opportunity to ride with the fire chief on a Code 3, and when we got into his truck, first thing he told me was I was not allowed to flip people off. And by the time we got to Sixth and Sierra, I completely understood what it meant. So I'm all in favor of it.
Okay. Robin?
Doesn't know directions, though.
I'm going to vote for the city seal on it. And it's kind of hard to stop a fire truck sometime when somebody pulls out in front of you, they're a little heavy. We used to have the, you can change the signal light, little deals in our cars when I worked in narcotics. It was kind of cool to do that. So I understand the benefit of them. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
City seal?
Got a first and a second?
Please vote.
Roxy was doing a good job.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
All right. We're going to get out of here. Let me go back to my agenda, which are two back down here. City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications, Andy, I'm going to start with you, because you're right here.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Robin?
Nothing.
Robin?
No.
You're here for the whole meeting, thank you!
The council is learning, we say.
It's nice. We almost had to put your substitute guy in there. I know. Gina, anything? Brian? See you Saturday? Yep. Chad?
No, just say thank you for all the support on the items, appreciate it.
All right, Matt, you can, is he allowed to speak? No, he's not? No? He's learning?
Smart guy.
All right. Thank you for fixing the... Okay. Cheryl?
Just to let the public know that the State of the City address is coming up on Thursday, March 29th, presented by Mayor Hoffman. And that'll be held at Silver Lakes. Doors open at 6:00, so the address will begin at 7:00 PM. And again, for more information, please see the city's website.
You had your chance.
Just remember, I'm sorry. We have scheduled the next community cleanup, that'll be at Ingalls Park, Request Question Center, sorry. It will be on April 14th. We are seeking volunteers, so Brian and his staff are already setting out flyers to hopefully get volunteers, but we need many volunteers so we can get through the whole six hours of, of the event, you know, as far as...
See, volunteers.
Prep and cleanup afterwards. So if you're interested in getting some community service and want to help out, please contact Parks Department, because we need that, we need the assistance.
Our friends from the Church of Latter Day Saints is already thumbs up on that one for us. All right. You guys did a great job last year, too, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to know if I could agendize the, the brackets that are on the Sixth Street light poles are really deteriorating. And I wonder if you could just look at replacing those, maybe making it bigger, because we already have a flap coming down, but a lot of them are broken off, they're bent, and they don't look that great. And I'm just wondering if, because we're getting ready to put, no, we should, actually, we should be putting up the veterans' things right now for Memorial Day.
You're talking about the...
The brackets that stick out.
You're talking about the, the Sixth Street light, commemorative light in those...
Yeah.
Street light? Okay. You know what we're talking about, Chad?
The decorative lights?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to figure out a way to, huh?
Banner pole connection.
Banner pole connections. Some of them are broken off, they're bent, and I just think that, I think they could look a lot better. And since we have the little flap hanging down, we could actually make it wider. I just think it's something we need to look at. So do I ask to agendize it, or, that's what I'm asking?
Jesus, please.
Staff just needs to look at it and find out what's going on.
Okay, thanks, that's good, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Couple things for Chad, since I know you, I'm always bagging on you. I wanted to thank you and Public Works for taking care of that. We had a situation with a resident and had a drainage ditch by the flood control, and Chad and his team took care of it and left the resident happy. And that, your, I wanted to let you know that I've gotten a few compliments on the painting of the wall at Californian North. Okay. You know, it's...
Did he use monkeys?
You know, I stopped in the middle of the street, it was two, two trucks, two guys from Brightview, and there was no traffic. And I stopped, and I told them what a good job they were doing, and how good it looked, and they just smiled, and they kept on trucking.
They've been told to avoid you.
Now, I don't want to say, because the monument guy was nowhere around, okay, but, but I wanted to compliment you on, on taking care of those items. Then I want to ask, or I want to be given a clarification on what Mr. Sullivan brought up under public comments about agendizing the resident's concerns. We can, we can't?
Well, unfortunately, I'm not obviously directly involved in that case. We heard tonight that there was, that he wasn't represented by council. I don't know whether, whether Mr. Sabaz substituted out, if, clearly if he hasn't, or if he substituted out, he substituted Mr. Mugiar. As long as he's represented by council, clearly you can't. But there's ongoing litigation, and it's never my recommendation that you discuss ongoing litigation in public. I mean, that's the purpose of litigation.
Okay, even though the...
But is it unlawful? No.
Because the resident stated he no longer had legal representation.
I under, yeah, I don't know what that means, and assuming that Mr. Sabaz, since this is active litigation, since Mr. Sabaz, at least at some point, was attorney of record, you don't simply say, well, I'm not working for anymore. You have to go through a process in court to be relieved as council. And I, again, it's not my case, so I don't know. The last court, the correspondence that was handed out was a letter to Mr. Sabaz.
Okay.
Councilmember Newton, what we can also do, since John is not the lawyer that is handling this, I can speak with the lawyer that is representing the city in this matter and have him provide update to the city council in close session, and at that time, you can determine who has to go next.
Okay, that, that would be fair. Thank you.
Anything else, Greg? John, anything? Let you have the last word? All right, with that, we're adjourned.